The following is the Butler, Missouri City Council meeting in its entirety, March 21st, 2023, courtesy of Mid-America Live News.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vote Paul?
Rich?
Here.
Alchire?
Liggins?
Here.
Paul?
Here.
Daddy?
Randles?
Here.
Barron's?
Here.
Mount?
Here.
Okay, have a consent agenda. Need a motion for approval of the regular session of March 7th, 2023.
So be it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of bill. Questions, comments on the bill? Second call. Questions or comments on the bill?
I make a motion, make up the bills as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I don't think, we didn't have any travel training, did we?
Nope.
Okay, the agenda, I need a motion to add the agreement with Miller Engineering for the fire station roof.
To the end. Resolution.
The resolution 492. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Scheduled guest, Butler Chamber Commerce, the event scheduled for the year.
I'll, uh... I'm going to represent the Chamber Commerce tonight, so, um, as, as we do every year, we have several, uh, events throughout the year, and those events have to go through the Event Committee as well. So, this is our yearly, uh, put together. Nothing's really changed, or went, uh, or added, or subtracted from this. This includes the Huxters Day, this includes the, uh, the Christmas Parade, so on. So, if you guys have got any questions, but like I said, this is the, I think this is the third or fourth year that we've used the same, the same, uh, applications. No. But thank you for talking up. Okay, so I'll get off to the Chamber now.
I move that we accept the schedule.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Committee reports, finance?
Yes, the Finance Committee, uh, we met tonight to discuss a couple items. Uh, first, we discussed the budget. Uh, we just kinda wanted to re-review the budgeted items. Uh, the second item we discussed was the purchasing policy, and at this time, uh, we decided to, before we amended the current policy, we wanted, uh, to wait until the city clerk returned, uh, because we wanted his input as well. That's all I have to report from the Finance Committee.
Hey, Board and Commissions, Park Board.
Uh, Park Board, we did not have enough for a quorum. We had a discussion amongst those who were there, uh, concerning some of the, uh, repairs that need to be done at various parks in the swimming pool area, and what would be the best way to go about getting final approval for acting on some of those, that, items. And that was about it at that meeting for that. And, the Planning Commission?
You want me to roll with that one?
Sir?
You want me to take that one?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, the Planning Commission met on the 14th. At that time, there was a continuation of the discussion for the special use permit at 100 South Fran. During that meet, meeting, Mr. Patel and his representatives presented the commission with additional information regarding rules and operations of the RV park. After the discussion, the vote at, was taken to approve the permit application with stipulations and recommend so to the City Council. So, with that, uh, the next publication, uh, that we could set up for, for the council to hear that, uh, would be April the 18th, 2023. That's all I have.
Okay, I'm kind of busy, son. And now we have a public hearing on the 2023-2024 budget, so we'll open that public hearing at this time. Any comments from the public back there on the budgets?
All silent, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, at this time, then we'll close the public hearing. Okay, next we have the, uh, Bill 2023-D03, uh, to adopt the 2023-24 budget. I get a motion for first reading by title only?
Motion for first reading, but by title only?
Second.
Rich?
Yes.
Alchire? Liggins?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Daddy? Randles?
Yes.
Barron's?
Yes.
Mallett?
Yes.
Bill number 2023-D03, an ordinance approving the 2023-2024 fiscal year budget of the City of Butler, as they're appropriating the requisite funds from the revenues of the city, providing for the expenditures and adjustments thereof, and providing for the salaries of the city officers and employees.
Rich?
Yes.
Well, we have a motion.
I have a motion for first reading. I entertain a, I entertain a motion for second reading by title only.
Motion for second reading, by title only.
Second.
Rich?
Yes.
Alchire? Liggins?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Daddy? Rick? Randles?
Yes.
Barron's?
Yes.
Mallett?
Yeah.
Bill number 2023-D03, an ordinance approving the 2023-2024 fiscal year budget of the City of Butler, as they're appropriating the requisite funds from the revenues of the city, providing for the expenditures and adjustments thereof, and providing for the salaries of the city officers and employees. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Rich?
Yes.
Alchire? Liggins?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Daddy? Randles?
Yes.
Barron's?
Yes.
Mallett?
Yes.
Okay, that's ordinance 1161. Next, we have resolution number 490. This has to do with, uh, membership to the Kasinger Basin Regional Planning Commission, and appointment of Mike West to the commission representing the City of Butler. Discussion on that?
I would like to know, uh, in Mike's absence, who would be the backup to represent?
Would probably be Cory.
Cory?
Yeah.
So, we're currently members? Like, we've done this every year?
Okay, right, so we're currently members right now, and that, uh, May is the cutoff. So, Na, May starts the new year. So, at that point in time, then you have to re-establish who's going to be appointed on Kasinger Basin's commission.
So, who was our current one for this year, right now?
Apparently we don't have one. We never had one. It was my understanding, when I first got here, that there was some discussions, and they didn't want to be part of Kasinger Basin, and then this last year, we went ahead and, and became members of it, since we were gonna do the comprehensive plan with them. But, I didn't realize that part of that was to actually appoint, uh, someone on the commission. So, yeah. Well, this is gonna cost us a thousand dollars, right? May, it'll cost us around, around a thousand.
And we didn't get anything for our thousand dollars last year, because nobody went.
Correct.
No one knew to go, right.
Well, I wouldn't say we didn't get anything, they, they, they did kinda represent us on the, uh, on the project out here on the railroad underpass.
Right.
And, uh, they, they did help, well, I'm not sure if that was last year or not. They, uh, they do our hazard mitigation grant for us, but, but that's actually funded, uh, by SEMA, so they'll do it whether we're members or not, and, uh, we had a grant application for a generator out at the, at the, uh, City Lake Raw Water Generator, and they did help us along with that. That's, that's probably been two years ago.
Well, I do think we do need someone there on our behalf, and that's why I was wondering, who would be the backup, 'cause I don't wanna see, um, the railroad bypass ignored for any reason. They came too far for that, and I just think it's key that we sit on that, on that board, or on that commission, to make sure that we are represented, and we might get some more ideas, too.
He can't go, Cory can't go, I'll go.
Yeah, like I said, I, I would say that definitely, if, if we're going to continue being a member, we definitely have to have representation, that's...
So, they only allowed one membership, or you can't, or can you have multiple memberships?
Each entity is represented one. Correct, yeah, and, uh, Bu, or Bates County, uh, has three. They have the county commissioner.
Right.
And then they have one for municipalities, and then they have one for at-large. And so, my understanding is, the process is, is that if you approve this, uh, tonight, I submit this to Kasinger Basin, um, and then I, I have already discussed it with them as far as becoming an actual board member itself. This gets us on Kasinger Basin's whole entire great big group, but, um, we need to be represented as well on the actual direct board. So, uh, once that takes place, there's, uh, there's a straw poll taken with the entities within the commu, or within the county, and if that's, and if it's chosen that direction, then, then I'll be able to, uh, represent, uh, Butler and Bates County itself.
And so, had we been on the board, it would've...
I would, if we were on the board, we would've saw this coming.
That's what I'm getting at, we wouldn't have this mix-up that we're having debate with them.
So, I would say, you know, it, this all comes down to, do you plan on, do you want to continue to be part of Kasinger Basin?
Yes, I make a motion that we appoint you to that.
Well, all you gotta do, 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 we're asking for the resolution 490.
For the first reading?
Now, we'll just have to, just have to pass it. Just a motion and a second.
Aye, second.
Oh, dear.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and that's resolution 491, uh, that's a resolution authorizing the City Minister to execute the SFY 2023 American Rescue Plan Act Fire Protection Grant.
And this was a grant that, uh, we had applied for, we really didn't figure that we would get it, um, but this was a $20,000 grant with a $20,000 match. This, uh, this money will be, uh, used to upgrade the fire department's radio system. Um, it will allow, uh, the upgrades will allow the vehicles so that they can, uh, we can use walkie-talkies with the vehicles and can communicate, uh, from, uh, with the extender system. As of now, the fire department can't talk to anyone when entering a building slash burning building, steel roofs, structures, basements, or concrete-sided buildings. Do you wanna, does that cover it?
That pretty much covers it, I think.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to adopt that resolution?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then we have, what was the res, what was the number of this?
492.
Yeah, 49, we have, uh, resolution 492, uh, agreement with Miller Engineering on the fire station roof.
So, explain to me what this one does that we didn't already do.
Okay, this, Miller Engineering, they, the, the original agreement with them was to, uh, give us a, uh, a, a small rendition of what was the issues, what were the problems, but we didn't get any type of details as far as, uh, what all, the, basically, we didn't get any shop drawings, we didn't get any, uh, uh, any type of, uh, of that stuff.
What the repairs would actually entail to bring the pass?
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So, if we agree with this, sign this, then they'll go ahead and give us what it takes to repair that roof, repair any walls, or anything else in there that...
Right, they'll give us, they'll give us specifications, so that, once we get those specifications, we can, uh, draft, we can draft bid documents, and then we can proceed.
Yes, because we cannot get bids from repairs without knowing exactly what we're bidding for.
Correct. And you will notice that there had been a slight modification on, on the agreement. I believe I had sent it to you email in regards to, uh, the, uh, description.
And they can get to this pretty quickly?
They'll, according to, uh, when I spoke with Kurt on this, as soon as we signed it, they're gonna get started.
Is there a timeline?
There was no timeline on this.
So, we can't move forward about this? No.
I mean, you, you could, if you wanted to, but it would be starting from scratch, so... So, we don't have a tentative date at all, nothing? I mean, that's good.
Yeah, this thing's drugging on long enough, I don't wanna drag on any longer. So, the man you talked to said, once this is, if it's passed, they'll get to work on it immediately, but he did not say how long it would approximately take them to complete the...
No.
Repair plan?
I, I just feel like we, by this, we need somebody that's gonna tell us exactly what they're recommending to do. I remember when we first started this, we had different ones come here, and some of you remember that, and, and one bunch of them said, "Well, we should tear the whole roof off, get rid of all that wet insulation, and start from scratch." And then there was another company that was here, they said, "Well, we, we don't think you need to do that, we think we can install some vents in there that will take care of that moisture," which I didn't think that would ever work, but they, it was like, we were trying to get bids, but there was like three people coming up with three different ways to fix it. So, the, the only thing this is doing is, is, it's pretty much setting the standard that everybody's got a bid on.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, I'm, I make a motion that we adopt this.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, report, City Clerk?
None.
Police Chief?
One quick thing. Okay, so, I noticed there's several hundred trucks out at Max Motors, and, uh, I called them last week and asked them, I says, "What's the cheapest truck that you have on the lot that you're rolling sell?" And he hung on around, back and forth, uh, and it was way out of my price range for anything. Uh, so, a little bit later, he called me back, he says, "I just looked again, we're having some trucks that are delivering, uh, this next weekend, and I think it's what you're looking for." He sent me an invoice on it, um, which, invoice price is, uh, $35,335. And then he says it's being delivered on Saturday, which was last Saturday, and, uh, he would send me an invoice once he, if everything worked out with, uh, government pricing, is what he called it. Uh, as far as state bid pricing, there's no such thing, uh, anymore, because it's first come, first served, and dealerships will not bid against other dealerships, so basically, they're just waiting in line for cars. Um, not that I didn't really believe him, uh, but he shot me an invoice for $34,100, which is about $1,100 cheaper than invoice. Uh, I called, uh, another dealer that specifically deals with most of the state bids in the past, uh, talked to their manager, and I said, "Hey, can you break this down to me on how this works now, considering there's no state bid pricing anymore?" And he says, "If you can find a truck that you like, buy it, 'cause you probably won't get to see it again for a while." I said, "Okay," well, and I told him that, uh, we have a local dealer that's got a, a truck that I'm looking for, for animal patrol truck, and, uh, I said, "The invoice price was this, and they're gonna sell it to me for basically $1,100 less." And he goes, "Buy it, buy it now, buy three if you can." Uh, he says, "I don't know when the next time I'm gonna get trucks," so he says, "If you can find them, buy them." So, especially if they're dealing with you, 'cause he's, he said, "Most people are cutting prices off invoices, or selling basically at sticker." So, uh, instead of waiting until next year's budget and purchasing a, uh, animal patrol truck, I have quite a bit left over in my current budget, and I'm asking permission to purchase outright a, uh, animal patrol truck on this year's budget, and then the money that is, uh, earmarked for the animal patrol truck, uh, next budget year, I'd like to use that money to cover the cost of the grant that we put in for, for two patrol vehicles next year. It's a lot of money moving back and forth.
Yeah.
Uh, basically, the truck's here, the truck's on site, and...
You haven't seen it?
Yeah, I haven't been able to...
Did you use?
Granted, yeah, I...
What is it?
A 1,500 grand.
1,500 grand? Four-wheel drive?
No, straight cab, two-wheel drive, I don't even think that's...
Straight cab, you don't need it, yeah.
It's literally the cheapest truck I've ever mixed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, but, uh, it's, it's $4,000 more than what was granted for next year's budget, but I also have a large excess in this year's budget.
Yeah.
So, that's why I'm asking.
I move that we allow him to purchase the vehicle.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
City Attorney?
Yes, um, I just wanna let, uh, the council and, uh, any city officials here know that, uh, our firm's putting on our city official training. Uh, we do this every year around, uh, spring, uh, in late, late April, early May, uh, we're doing five different sessions in five different locations. Uh, April 21st is in Independence, uh, April 28th is in Jefferson City, uh, May 5th is in Republic, May 12th is in Lebanon, and May 19th is in Carney. Um, obviously, uh, anyone here is welcome to join. I believe we've already, uh, sent out a brochure, uh, either to Cory or to Mike, but, uh, I could send additional information if needed, so that's all I have.
The Administrator?
I've got a few things for you this evening. Don't forget, uh, anybody that was wanting to bid on the hay bids, those were due in, uh, the 24th of March. Um, we also have our surplus property, uh, bids, and they are, that, that will close on March the 31st. Becky had spoke about the recycling bin at the last meeting, and, uh, I had spoke with Lee from Countywide, uh, on, about the bin, and that, uh, since that time, I've spoken with Lee today, the bin is in, it has the decals on it, all they're doing now is they're just double-checking with the Dollar Tree to make sure that, uh, everything's good with corporate. So, hopefully, by the end of the week, we will have a recycling bin located there. Uh, my understanding is that, that they were talking about the area, uh, between Dollar Tree and the carpenter's cabin. So, um, so with that, um... Just to let you know that, uh, the AMI system, um, we spoke with them, and they should be here in May to start the process. And also along with that, uh, we have spring cleanup, uh, we will have spring cleanup this, uh, this year, um, we're hoping to shoot for mid-May. Lee has enough staff, so that we're gonna do this in one week only. So, but anyway, look for, look for our advertisement sometime in mid to late April for the date. Uh, don't forget that we have a dedication ceremony, April the 4th, at the Northfield Park, this is for the kitten and friends inclusive playground. Also along with this, uh, don't forget that we have, uh, a marijuana tax for recreational purposes on the ballots this year, and for April 4th, uh, the Butler voters will decide if the recreational marijuana sold in Butler should be charged a 3% sales tax. This is only on retail sales at a state licensed store, if Butler would ever get one. And, that is all I have for you this evening.
By install and getting by in May, you mean they're gonna start, like, installing the things, or what does that mean?
That is...
Yeah, I didn't know what the process meant either.
Yes, it's, my understanding is, is that they're gonna start the process in May.
Well, you mean, like, installing the equipment, or providing training?
Right.
Installing, uh, the software?
They're gonna start with the hardware on the, on the towers and move on from there, right.
Give you any kinda timeline on, though, when we'll be ready to use it?
The timeline is going to depend on us, uh, because we are the ones that are installing the water meters and the electric meters. Electric meters will go fairly fast, water meters will take some time. Uh, we anticipate to be completed, uh, probably in two years, so, with the water meters and everything. We have 2,000 water meters roughly, and it takes a little bit of time, and especially right now, when we have...
Manpower.
We have one.
Yeah, we have manpower problems on the water department right now, so...
So, is it, we won't roll it out until we're 100% installed?
No.
Or we'll go through and install...
We will, we will start, what we're gonna do is, once we start, we will start by book. And so, once we get a book done, then that one will roll over to the AMI system, and then we'll move on to the next book.
Okay, so if the electric meters can be replaced fairly simply, if they're all done, then you can start using those, right?
Correct.
And as the water meters are replaced by book by book, then start in with those.
Right.
So, the likelihood is that the electric meters will be completed fairly quickly.
Right.
And then the meters, uh, a little by... And then the meters uh, a little by little.
Yeah.
So in that, it lapses in the middle, will there, one payment still be able to be made to the city or will parent, people have to pay?
One.
Because it'll be two different systems.
One, like I said, it won't be, it won't be fully functional.
Okay.
But we're, we'll integrate as we go, so, yeah.
Okay, public work, uh, submitted to his closing report.
Another of his time.
Our choose, I'm here. I don't really have anything, uh, hoping it's gonna warm up here for me. We start getting some things accomplished. Councilman Rich?
I don't have anything tonight, sir.
Reagan?
Um, yes, first of all, I wanna uh, wish uh, Cory, the city clerk, uh, a fast recovery. Um, and also, I just need to kinda like, I was going through some old notes and I still had something out here with the uh, property sale uh, with MF Oil, and that's been a while ago.
Mm-hmm.
And I think uh, the last time, what my notes said was that Anthony had done some addendums to the contract and we sent it back to Don, but have we heard anything else? Are they still interested in that, that property out there in the industrial park?
They're building out there.
Yeah, they're building.
Yeah, they're building.
Are they building out there?
Yeah.
I must have missed all of the rest of that again, so.
Yeah, no, it, it, it was all approved and.
Okay.
Yeah.
I apologize, I didn't get that.
No, no, that's fine.
And um, I noticed that, you know, you, we are gonna be talking when Cory gets back about the recodification and I really do think that we need to make that a priority, seems like that's been going on a little bit too long. Uh, I do wanna say that I, I just noticed the green space uptown, uh, on the square. I, we haven't named it yet, so I'm always gonna call it the green space. Uh, they have a new light fixture.
Mm-hmm.
That I just noticed.
Oh.
Uh, which I think is very nice.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my only concern, do you think is hanging the lamp pole itself, is hanging just a little bit too low? Or is it supposed to be like that?
I think it's supposed to be like that.
I mean, it's beautiful, don't get me wrong, I, I think it's beautiful, it's kinda like that.
Yeah, it's, it's been up several months.
Well, I just don't go around the square that often. I just noticed it when I was coming in that direction, but it looks very nice.
I believe it's, I believe it's the same one that was in, over in front of the old city hall.
Yes, that was my understanding.
On the pedestal in front of old city hall, it's that same light fixture with.
Well, it looks nice right there, yeah.
It is, seems a little low, but.
It seems just a little low? I just didn't want, if anybody would be up there playing with it or anything or.
Hopefully not, hopefully they'll respect that, but we'll see as time goes by.
And are they talking about getting a water fountain there?
I do not know about a water fountain, but I do know Cory mentioned at the last council meeting, I believe, that the benches and a park table
Yes.
Have been.
Right.
Right.
You know, they're coming, they'll be installed and also the uh, murals.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the Electric City Downtown Association, is, is that the right terminology for them?
I believe so.
I believe so, yes. They have the murals that they want put up over there and they're cleaning them and touching them up and they've been in touch with Trent about.
Oh, good.
Uh, where they want them and they're gonna put them in like an L shape in the north, I mean, the southeast corner. So part of it'll be on the east, part of it on the south. But the thing is, I believe Trent's looking into right now is how to stabilize them where they're up there.
With the wind and everything?
Yeah, what the mountain to, what to install in the ground for stability for them, yeah. So that's all in the movement.
Good deal.
And a name, I don't know, I suppose we could touch base with the Electric City Downtown and see if they got a name other than green space that.
We're always gonna call it the green space.
Yep, yep.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Paul?
It's good to be back, I can thank the mayor and city council for the uh, get well card and the balloon and the candy, the candy was essential for my recovery. Uh, the other thing I got, um, I did have some citizens ask me if we are, have any plans for the near future to paint the front of the city hall. They say it's starting to look rough, do we have any plans to paint the front anytime soon?
I do not at this time.
They could sure use it though, I do agree with that.
Sallya? Reynolds?
Um, the soccer fields, um, a few kids that, you know, practices have started in the last week or so. Um, there's some, uh, the year they had COVID and the year after that, there were some people went out and drove on the fields and so there are some tire ruts. The grass has grown back over them, so you don't see them very clearly, but when you're running, you're tripping and falling on them. Um, so I don't know if it would be possible to get any park attention, I see, you know, we spend a lot of time on those baseball fields. We could maybe get some help out there on the soccer fields, trying to help smooth them out, so we don't end up with, with the ankles and busted knees. Um, and then I know that you had said the chicken and rabbit thing needed to go back to public safety? Is that where that needs to go next? I, this, that's kinda stalled.
Right, no, uh, right now it has to go, we have to do some modifications as far as zoning is concerned.
Yeah.
So.
If I could jump in, the idea is to get the zoning uh, stuff lined up first before we just send out a general ordinance because then people are just gonna do it however they please, um, best to have the zoning in place before uh, we pass the general ordinance for the cats and the, or, cats, well, it's chickens and rabbits, I think.
Yes.
Um, I've already provided a copy of the general uh, draft to him, but I was waiting on feedback on the dimensions of where the chickens and the rabbits will be.
Right, and, and if I remember correctly, we have a public safety meeting scheduled for. Okay?
No, we were waiting after we heard from the zoning. I don't have anything on my calendar.
Okay, alright. Well, one of the things that we were going to need to talk about was uh, with, like Anthony said, is if um, we have some additional uh, dimensions for the coop, uh, and for the locations. Uh, and then do we want to, uh, what, where do we want to allow it? Do we wanna allow it in our, in all residential? Do you wanna limit it to an R two or an R three or R one? So, you know.
Well, I, I'm on that committee, so.
So if you want to do a uh, public safety meeting, I don't know where other committee to send it to or unless you wanna bring, I can bring that up or we can discuss it now.
Well, our public safety leader isn't here, so I think that just depends on Selas, the co-chair, but.
I, I see a problem with having it in residential areas that produce multi-family dwellings and things like that. I would say restricted to R one. And you can see the part, the problem is kinda like at brown apartments, Wicks Lane, places like that.
Oh, come on, I wanted a chicken coop.
Well, you were the one I was worried about. But, you know, when you live in, I mean, people don't play well with others as it is and you get apartment complexes and things like that when somebody's got chickens or rabbits or. I just think this is something we need to do right, I don't have all the answers for that, but we need to think about this.
You go to committee.
Yeah, we do have a committee to say, but I think we're getting ready to change hands here.
Yeah. In April, we, we do that all over, don't we?
We're gonna change hands to a really second meeting in April, sir.
Yeah, we can do the second meeting in April.
How about the first?
Well, the first meeting, we, we'll be having installing possibly, I mean, April?
April fourth?
April fourth.
That's the election night.
I wouldn't wanna have it before then. I'd rather have it like, right before council, it works for me better, instead of having on another day.
But the fourth is a council meeting.
Fourth is a council meeting.
Yes.
Right.
But it's election and then we have the dedication, but we can all slip things in, I suppose.
So what about April the eighteenth?
Um, we can do that, but like I said, that will be a changeover from the, to possibly.
Well, that's okay, we'll, I'll still be talking about it.
Okay.
I mean, it's okay with me, it.
Yeah.
Depends on everybody else. Okay, six o'clock? And that would be the um, safety? Public safety?
Mm-hmm.
That was all I had.
Maringer?
I don't have anything.
Not?
Uh, just wanna make mention of the uh, inclusive park dedication and everybody's welcome to come, every citizen that wants to be there, that appreciates it. Uh, and always remember that it's called an inclusive park, that means any and all children. Any and all children can use that park to play in and get along with each other. And uh, I think it's gonna be a wonderful thing, it's, I haven't heard one bad comment about any of it. And also, don't forget April the fourth, as we just said, is election day, voting day for various subjects. So get out there and get your opinion heard on it all, and that's all I've got.
Any media question?
Uh, what time's the dedication on the fourth?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, need a motion to go into closed session.
So be it.
Second. Third. Fourth.
In accordance with R S M O six ten dot zero two one, the board may go into closed session during this meeting to discuss matters of litigation, legal action and or mediation from the city attorney as provided under section six ten dot zero two one one and or personnel under section six ten dot oh two one thirteen and or employee under section six ten dot oh two ten three and or contracts under section six ten dot oh two one twelve and or real estate under section six ten dot oh two one two.